Okay, we're back for our regular board meeting. And for Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
All right, will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Okay, so thank you for being here this evening and joining us. I'd like to remind you that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. As always, we're going to start with our superintendent's report, Rob.
Board President, Marquess, members of the board. Happy New Year. It's good to see everyone back. I want to thank all of our teachers and employees and students for coming back this week. Our teachers all started with professional development learning on Monday, and today was the first day back for our students, so we welcome all of our students back and hopefully everyone had a restful and enjoyable winter break. Had an opportunity to relax and recharge and get ready for a great second semester. Just a couple of thank yous. I want to start by sending thanks to KGNU Community Radio and Frank Dobowski, who had me on Monday morning, spent a half hour. It was a great opportunity, really appreciated that, and so thank you to KGNU. Also want have, we started today, we had our first strategic planning process meeting with sixty or so of our staff, along with teachers and principals, spent all day looking at data and starting that process, so I want to thank those folks that participated. And remind our public that we have four input sessions on our new strategic plan, our strategic planning input sessions, over the course of the next month. On the 28th, January 28th, we have a session at Broomfield, starts at 4:30. We have a session at Lafayette Elementary on the 31st. We have two other sessions, a Spanish-speaking session on the 30th. These are going to be posted on our website, and also another Saturday session that I believe will be held here on the 19th of February. And really want to encourage our community to come out and give us, give us feedback on where we're headed, thinking about moving and improving upon where we are today to make sure they're reaching the needs of all kids, and so those opportunities will be coming up. Also, would want to update the board and the community, you know, as you know that we've been going through the rating processes from the top rating agencies, Fitch, Moody's, Standards &amp; Poor's. These ratings are required when debt is issued, and which we've planned for later this month for the last portion of our 2014 bond program. And while some districts utilize the state rating, that we, I'm proud to and pleased to report that our ratings exceed those of the state and all three rating agencies, and then no Colorado K-12 school district has higher credit ratings than BVSD. And so I just think that that's a testament to how we're managing our funds and being responsible with our, with taxpayer dollars, and so want to thank our staff and thank our community for their continued support. And that's all I have.
Okay, board members, any questions for Rob? Okay, Kathy?
Other than posting the dates of the strategic plan, community engagement, how else are we going to be reaching out to our community to let them know about this?
We have a communications plan, and I'm happy to share that with the board. We can, I can do that this Friday on how we're continuing to reaching and engaging our community.
Okay, and any other questions? Nope, great. So our next item is public participation, and we don't have a lot of speakers this evening. Just a reminder that we value public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. We ask that persons who address the board can find your comments to matters germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. We have both this evening. We ask you to limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue later. That will not be the case. And recognize that students often view or attend our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. So there is a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two minutes start, turning to yellow when you have thirty seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. So that's it, and we'll move on to our agenda items, and we'll start with Jennifer Beegan.
Yes, Kathy.
Okay.
Can I move this over just a little bit here? Good evening. My name is Jennifer Beegan, and I have one child in BVSD and another who will attend soon. I am greatly opposed to the prospect of Ascent Classical Academy joining BVSD, a public school district. I've read the Ascent application materials, I've researched the websites of their locations in Denver, I've taught in a Core Knowledge Classical Option School in Jeffco, and I have read the DAC recommendation. In addition to the written reasons for denial, for myself and my family, the most significant reason involves the fusing of religion and education. Ascent Classical Academy teaches and espouses Christianity, and according to my First Amendment constitutional right, my tax dollars should not be used to support a public institution that establishes a religion. The curriculum maps publicly available for both Colorado Ascent locations clearly show the preponderance of Christian texts. In second grade, for example, students read Charles Dickens' A Christmas Carol, they sing Angels We Have Heard on High, which includes the lyric, "Come adorn on bended knee Christ the Lord, the newborn king." These are part of the curriculum, along with other carols as noted on the curriculum map. These are seven and eight-year-olds singing and reading Christian tenets, beliefs, and practices. A Christmas carol, as much as people think of it as a secular tale, also includes biblical references, such as Tiny Tim talking about he who made lame beggars walk and blind men see. Children will likely ask, who made lame beggars walk and blind men see? Therefore, there's the teaching of Christianity, and that is a belief. That is not a fact, that is not history, that is a belief of the Christian faith, of the Christian public, not the general public. This teaching belongs in a place of worship, or better yet, at home. Ascent also boasts its partnership with Hillsdale College, which just recently revised its mission to, by precept and by example, teach and maintain the moral teachings and practices of the Christian faith. My issue is not with Ascent, it is not with Core Knowledge Schools. I've taught in one, and I do believe that for some populations that works, but not in a public school district with this curriculum.
Okay. Our next speaker is Heidi Ginnall.
Good evening, everyone. I am the mom of four, twins in first grade, and a fourth grader at Superior Elementary School, and a graduate of El Dorado K-8 in Mo-Hi, I call it Monarch, Tori, who's now just graduated from the University of Oregon. Since I sold my franchise company in Camp Bawa a couple of years ago, I decided to get involved in education reform in Colorado and put my heart and soul there, because I was blessed to live the American dream, and I want every child to have that same opportunity, including my own. I'm an elected CEO/Regent statewide, I'm on the Board of Colorado Succeeds, the Board of Teach for America, I'm on the Governor's Education Leadership Council, and the Governor's Youth and Crisis and School Safety Committee. Two of my three little ones are struggling in school right now. We pay for tutoring three times a week, we put my nine-year-old through Lyndemood Bell for the summer, which was over $8,000, and we work every night with them, reading and writing, to help them stay ahead. They're bright kids, and they love learning, they're just not a good fit for the way the school is set up right now. I volunteer each week in each of the three classrooms to stay engaged with their teachers, and I'm doing all I can to support their learning in our neighborhood school. As a leader in education in Colorado who lives right here in Superior, it breaks my heart that my own children are struggling, and I am out of options here in my home school district. Parents at Superior Elementary and El Dorado K-8 are reaching out to me in droves, I mean it, probably ten to fifteen a day, asking about this school and wanting to know more since they know that I'm involved. Please, please trust the parents of BVSD, of the 550 children that are in need of another choice to educate our children. Trust us, parents, to research the school and decide what's in the best interest of our little ones. I've seen it live in action in Douglas County and Goldenview. It's an amazing experience, and I would hope every one of you would go tour and experience. I know several of you have, and I appreciate that. But to be there and hear the children love learning and love being there is incredible. I love Superior Elementary, but I think two of, at least two of my three little ones need another option. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brenda Jones, and my family and I live in the BVSD zone and have two children who attend school in Lewisville. One is in a private school and the other is in a public elementary school. The one in private school attended our neighborhood school last year, but did not make academic progress through the Learning Through Play Focus curriculum. We have two very different children. Not only do they have different personalities and interests, but also different learning styles. We have searched high and low for a school with a curriculum that would allow both our children to succeed and reach their full potential. We are so happy to have found it in Ascent Classical Academy and hope that the board approves the application to allow our children and others the opportunity to attend a school in which we feel they will excel. We visited Goldenview Academy in Golden, which uses the same model of education as Ascent aspires to, and immediately felt we were in the right place. In each classroom, we were greeted by a student who, while looking at us in the eyes, introduced himself, gave a brief summary of the unit they were actively working on, and asked if we had questions. That is not something you find every day, and goes to show, not only does classical education excel in academics, but also in developing a whole person. We also observed the students answering questions, contributing information, having conversations with their teachers, and enjoying the lessons at hand. We truly hope the board approves the application submitted by Ascent Classical Academy, as we feel it would be a great addition to the BVSD family. Thank you for your time.
Okay, and then we have two speakers on non-agenda items. The first speaker was given two minutes by Ben Lee, and I'm going to apologize. Yuan Feng Gao. Sorry if I didn't get that right.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. So today, I'm here to talk about and ask the help from BVSD to continue to support the Chinese Language AP Test. BVSD provided Chinese Language AP Test for many years, and there are students taking the test every year, but suddenly, this year, the test is gone, and this test is still available for our neighboring school districts. But our students from BVSD have trouble to register their tests in other districts because some of the students, they registered, and later on, they got canceled, say, okay, now test classroom is full, and we have to give priority to their own school district. And some schools, like St. William River, he said, oh, we only give the test to our own district, even in the same county. That's, looks to me, is unacceptable. So, so this is, looks to me, as a parent, I feel very embarrassing, because this test is only administered once a year, and if you miss this time, you have to wait for another year, and if the same problem happened again, you have another year. We don't have much time for this hard-working student on this language class. So there are many students studying, actually studying Chinese language, and they are preparing for the test. For example, students from Bo Hua Chinese School, which is a school located in BVSD, for the last three years, every year, they have twenty to thirty students are taking the test, and among them, how, about half of them is from BVSD. So according to my understanding, to hold such a test will not introduce any financial burden to the district. We mainly need just one classroom with necessarily equipment, basically just some computers. And the cost should be mostly covered by the registration fee. And most of our neighboring school district are able to offer the Chinese AP Test service. Some of them even provide courses to help students to prepare for the test. So as a parent, it's really hard to accept, and nor is it easy for me to understand why BVSD not only does not provide Chinese AP courses, nor can even provide a classroom for the test. I feel kind of sad. One thing I'd like to mention is that BVSD has a very large student population learning Chinese language. For example, only the Bo Hua Chinese School, which has active enrollment, even for now, they have about 260 students learning Chinese language, and many of them doesn't have any Asian origin. So we hope that BVSD could support such a large Chinese learning students group. So in summary, I think BVSD should continue to have a Chinese AP Test site, and your support is greatly appreciated. Thank you. So I appreciate Mr. Lee, he gave me another two minutes to speak about this, because we have, just mentioned, we have a Chinese school, which is Sunday class school.
Your four minutes are up, sorry.
Sorry. So I just hope BVSD can support Chinese school too, the Bo Hua Chinese School. Thank you.
Okay, and our next speaker is Pei Ying Zhang.
So, dear board members, and so, so today, I'm going to talk about two things, actually. First, I want to second Yun Feng's point about AP Test, AP Chinese Test. So I, you know, my daughter Jenny, my daughter Jenny is a fresh, fresh student at Fairview, and she registered AP Test actually at Cherry Creek High School. Because of BVSD, we don't provide that test in this summer, in this coming summer, so she registered actually last month, actually at Cherry Creek, so we need to travel, but sadly, she received an email with consolation, because Cherry Creek says their own school have many students registered, so they don't have capacity. Even we already paid and already registered, but that registration was canceled. So here, I, you know, you know, I bet, you know, board member reconsidering, like, so support at least my daughter, and so they can, you know, take advantage of that. And also, you know, I want to repeat that, you know, diversify, I think, is very important. At home, we try to diversify in culture, actually. So, you know, push my kids to learn Chinese instead of English, actually, it's really, really hard, and so I'm struggling with them. I think AP Test actually is a great power to push them to learn Chinese, actually, even without an AP Test. And then they will say, oh, okay, why, why learn this hard language? And they will, they will probably skip it, actually, so I beg your help, actually. The second thing is, I have two kids, actually, and fourteen years, and also five years. And so, you know, as a parent and dad, nutrition and lunch and food service is very important, and, okay. So, so I'm also looking for your help, and maybe diversify the food service, because my daughter always says, oh, the food, you know, is not good, and then they will go back and eat elephant at home.
Thank you. And I'll just remind speakers, if any time your time is cut short, you can always send an email to the board to follow up any thoughts that you didn't have the time to convey. We tend to read our email, so thank you. All right, so our next item is board comment, board communication. Who would like to start? Sam?
Well, thanks to Mr. Zhang and Mr. Gao for your comments this evening, and I guess, Rob, maybe I'll put in RFI, just would be interested in knowing about the change there with the AP Test. Thank you. And thanks also to the parents who shared their views about Ascent. We do appreciate hearing from you. I just wanted to quickly thank the Metal Arc team, Principal Brent Caldwell and Assistant Principal Senin Nowar, as well as our Assistant Superintendent Margaret Crespo, who showed me around Metal Arc this morning. And if you haven't been there, I highly recommend it. It was my first time at this relatively new school out in Erie, and great to see how the flexible design of the new building and the team teaching approach helps with project-based learning and differentiated instruction. Heard about some of the challenges that has also been brought on by the success of the school and the growth of the area, so it's really an instructive visit, and thanks again to the Metal Arc team for, for having me there, as we high-five the kids coming in from winter break. It was fun.
Who's next? Shall I?
Just want to thank everyone who came to speak on behalf of Ascent, and also those who had concerns about Ascent. Thank you for coming and sharing your opinions, and also to those of you who are concerned about the AP Test, and I think we will find out more about that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention, and that's it. Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, so with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is an informational item. Hold on. It's the legislative update. I'm logging in, I'm sorry, I lost my connection here. Okay, legislative update. Who wants to kick this off? Rob, Kathy? You go.
I have a whole lot to report, since they've only met a couple days. But I think that there's some interesting proposals out there that could have an impact on BVSD around tax equalization, and so, once there's an actual proposal, I think we'll have to consider that pretty seriously. So, I read that there's 24 education bills already, which makes me a little nervous, and I have not taken the time to read all of those, and I'll try to give a better update at the next meeting. Have we taken, has our lobbyists taken a position on any of those? When would we expect to see that? On what, on the 24 bills? Yeah. Soon as they have a chance to read them, I think. So no, I haven't seen anything, Shelley, about anybody taking any positions. I think it was just a counting of the bills that have been prefiled. And as you know, the legislature's still kind of playing musical chairs, people moving up to the Senate, reappointments to the House, new bills coming, so I think it's going to take a little bit of time for that to settle down.
And I just wanted to add, there was one article about the one tax proposal in the Denver Post over the weekend, if you missed it, yeah, probably everyone saw it, yeah, it was pretty thorough. And the process for the lobbyists to get back to staff, what is that going to look like? Do we know, or have we talked about that enough? Do we, can we ask Tanya and Ernestine to provide some kind of regular update to the board?
Certainly, we can, we can have them provide a regular update to the board, and I want to say we had a conversation on how we would then kind of collectively weigh in on what that might look like and how we're going to do that, and so we can certainly talk about how we schedule, how to do that as well.
Yeah, I think we need to continue to work on that, because phone calling's not going to work.
No.
Okay, all right. Great, so our next item are action items. Okay, so I'm going to read the list of items. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, December 11th, 2018, Special Meeting, CAFR. 7.3 Approval of Minutes, December 11th, 2018, Special Meeting. 7.4 Approval of Minutes, December 11th, 2018, Regular Meeting. 7.5 Approval of Minutes, December 18th, 2018, Special Meeting. Quarterly Planning. 7.6 Acceptance of Donation, KC Middle School. 7.7 Acceptance of Donation, Heatherwood Elementary. 7.8 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Coal Creek Elementary School. 7.9 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Heatherwood Elementary School. 7.10 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Superior Elementary. 7.11 Approval of Series 2019, Series A and 2019, Series B Bonds and Adoption of Resolution 1906. 7.12 Board Resolution 1901 Regarding Notice of Meetings for the Board of Education. 7.13 Closeout to the Roofing Services Contract for Bond-Funded Roofing Work at Community Montessori School. 7.14 Contract Amendment for Asbestos Abatement at the Education Center. So are there any items that board members would like to pull? Okay, hearing none. Is there any, do we have a motion to approve? First, motion by Kathy, second by Kitty. And any discussion or questions? Yeah, Kitty?
I'm just, have a question about the resolution about posting meetings. We're already doing this. Do we, is this something we do every year, is adopt a res, okay.
Yeah, is that correct?
Yeah. So it's nothing new?
No.
Okay.
Okay, Laura, could you please call the vote on the motion?
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we're moving on to our action items. First action item is 8.1, the Legislative Platform. So we talked about this a while back, and this is just adopting it. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Kitty, seconded by Kathy. Any discussion? Any comments? Okay, hearing none. Laura, would you please call the vote?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is 8.2, the School Turnaround Plan, and this is the plan we heard about from Kent Kruger before we went on break. Okay, do we have a motion to approve? By Kitty, seconded by Sam. All right, any questions or discussion? Kathy?
Applying for a grant to help do some of this work, and have we heard whether we got that grant, and if so, how much?
We should be hearing back this week. They originally told us we'd hear before the break, but things have just been moving slow on this, and so we've contacted CDE, and they said that we would hear back this week, and so as soon as we hear back, I'll let y'all know.
Okay. Kathy?
If we don't get the grant, will it change our plan here? Because we won't have the additional funding to be able to implement this?
I don't foresee the plan changing. If we don't get the grant, we're very hopeful that that's going to come through for us, but, but we don't see the plan changing at this point, no.
How much was the application for?
I may have Robin Fernandez come up, and, or I can follow up with questions, or we can answer those, those now, in regards to the specifics of the grant, whatever you prefer.
I just have a couple of questions, because it's up for action and approval tonight, so.
So the amount of the, the award of the CDE grant is actually publicized at the time of the award, and that is based on the total amount that CDE has allocated for this work, divided by the number of grants that they decide to award for this work throughout the state.
Do we have a ballpark of what we're hoping for?
It could be anywhere, it is my understanding, from 50,000 to possible 150,000.
Because we would have had to at least ask for some amount of money in our application, so that was the range we asked for?
Correct.
And what would that go for, if we were to receive it? Just implementing all of this? Additional staff, additional?
Yes, it would go toward an understanding and development of the systems and structures involving training for both leadership and teachers around being able to understand how to address the specific root causes that were identified in the action plan, and then how to transform instructional practice and social-emotional learning practice, disciplinary policies, and any sort of other curricular items that would need to be addressed as a result.
Thanks. Are you good? Okay, Richard?
I, I went through the, because when Kent presented to us, he didn't present this specific, in-depth presentation that we have in front of us. And as I was reading it, I was getting a little bit concerned as it related to some of the root causes, particularly the one that addresses this behavioral challenges and trauma, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And concern that I have, because I live in that particular community, or I work a lot in that particular community, I, I guess I just need to look a little bit more in-depth in terms of really, what are they talking about when they talk about behavioral challenges and trauma? Being poor, being poor is not just one indicator of trauma, obviously it has some influences, but really, I want to know what it is they're talking about, because I don't understand it.
And Richard, is that something that we can do through an RFI or a follow-up, or? Richard, is that something that we can do through an RFI or a follow-up or?
I guess I can do an RFI on that too, yeah. I just want to make sure that people understand exactly where I'm at with it because it raises a bunch of red flags for me.
Shelley?
Yeah, Richard, I also had some similar questions and I appreciate you looking into that more. Thank you.
And I did have one question. Did DAC review the turnaround plan?
I'll have to check on that. I'm not certain that they reviewed the turnaround plan.
Okay, I can't remember if that's part of their role.
I did, I don't.
Okay. Yeah, let's follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Process question. Is there a reason that this had to be in action tonight and since it's the first time we've seen it, we couldn't have it as study? And get some of these questions answered and then bring it back for action? I'm just curious about the timing on this.
From my understanding, that these turnaround plans, in the past, there was never a presentation. It was just kind of put on the agenda. And we wanted to be really transparent and give Kent and Alicia Sanchez the opportunity to come and talk about some of the work. I do think that there are deadlines in regards to turning this plan around. I believe that's why we went from study to action. I don't have in front of me the deadline for when this needs to be turned in. I'll look to staff to see if there's anyone who has a sense of when this needs to be done. Because certainly, if we need to take some extra time, we could certainly do that if there's not a deadline to answer the questions in regards to trauma and get the answer to the question in regards to the grant.
And DAC?
And DAC. And so, I'd propose that maybe then we hold off on acting on this item this evening. Because I'm not, but I'm not certain of the timelines right here. And I'm looking for Jonathan. He's not here, so...
Yeah, I don't know if I would hold off on it. I think that we can get the information we need. And this is also, I believe, to submit to the CDE. So, I think that, and I also commend you for bringing this up to the board as a study item prior, which we have not historically done, so I really appreciate that. That might be a new path we're taking to get more information on schools that go into turnaround status. So, would the board be comfortable, well, we can vote on it, but I think we should try to get this through so that they can turn in this and then get clarification. Unless there's a high level of discomforts.
I just want to make it clear that the study was not this. The study that we had was a presentation by the principal, which was great.
Right.
But this is the first time, when this was published, that we got to see it. So, that's where my concern was because there's additional things in here that weren't raised necessarily. I don't have any issues with it per se. I just was curious about the process because it seems backwards to ask the questions after we've approved it.
Well, let me, we should, does everyone want to hold off? Do we? Donna, then Sam?
I was just going to say if there's not a dire urgency to act on it, I would say we could put another step in the process.
And, Richard, what you pointed out, it raised my questions because I was thinking of it more from special ed or BCBA's going into the schools and helping with any behavior challenges. I wasn't looking at it as a specific population being the root cause. So, now that you mentioned poverty, behavior challenges, I was looking at it as behavior challenges to academic learning.
So, to remove this from action, do we still go through the motion and just say no and then bring it back next time? Is that the best? Motion to postpone, okay.
Don't, do we have a motion on the floor to accept it?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, we have to do something with that, right? Do we do an amendment?
Yeah, so does someone want to make a motion to postpone?
I move we postpone acting on the Alicia Sanchez UIP.
Okay, do we have a second? Shelley? Okay, and now can we vote on that motion? Alright, Laura, will you please call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and on this one, it might make sense to, again, we took notes on questions, you took notes on questions, but if you have a specific question, should we send it to you as well? Okay, so if you can, remember to send your questions to Rob about the turnaround plan as soon as possible. That'd be great.
Richard, are you still going to do the RFI?
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so our next item is item number nine, Policy Action. And Melissa or Laura, is there a way to group these or we, if we wanted to or? No? Okay. We didn't last time, I know. Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose somebody could make a motion to approve items 9.1 through 9.13.
If we, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I move what Melissa said, that we adopt items 9.1 through 9.13 all at once.
Is there a second to that motion? It's okay, Sam's going to second it. Alright, Laura, do you want to call the roll?
The motion is to move to adopt 9.1 through 9.13 all at once. Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, okay.
For President, Marquess, just as a point of clarification, moving forward, is that how the board would like us to present these?
I think it's going to depend on the set of policies. So, I, unfortunately, so I think that this is just fine for us to do what we just did.
Okay.
I think there are going to be times that we're going to probably continue to discuss certain policies.
So, we'll continue to bring the policies individually and if it's the will of the board to make a motion to approve them all at once, we're happy to oblige.
Is everyone okay with that? Okay.
Is there a way to do this similarly to the way we do consent grouping? Is put them together and then pull it if you don't want to do it all together? Is that possible?
Yeah, we could probably make the heading the same. Policy Action Items Consent Grouping. And we could handle it the same way.
Okay. Alright, well, we can try that or, great. Alright, the next item is Policy Study, 10.1. Study of Policies JB, Equal Educational Opportunities JBB, Students Sexual Harassment JFABD, Homeless Students JFABE, Students in Foster Care JFE, JFF, Pregnant Married Students, JICI Weapons in School. Alright, so Melissa, do you want to walk us through these or Rob?
Melissa?
Alright, so we have just these six on, for study tonight. And we've, a little bit disjointed in terms of subjects. We have the Equal Opportunities, Equal Educational Opportunities Policy and the Students Sexual Harassment Policy. And both of those are essentially, have been reviewed with no changes. There's one minor change in the reference to the EEO policy. And those were last updated in 2012 and we're aligned with CASB on those still. The Homeless Students Policy has been revised. And that one hasn't been looked at since, I don't know when. The policy says adopted and there's a blank, so it's been a long time. And then, we have updated the regulation that goes with that. And this really is to align with changes in the law. There's federal law and state law on this topic. They're not 100% in alignment with each other, so the policy picks up all of that. And it has been reviewed by the person, Emma Lyman, who actually implements this policy on a day-to-day basis. So, it's consistent with our practices. The Students in Foster Care Policy, JFABE, this is new and reflects changes in the law. And there's a regulation that accompanies that. And we've been moving forward, again, also with Emma Lyman, who handles this as the liaison for the district. So, we've been implementing and working with the agencies on some of the cooperative agreements to implement these practices. But now we'll have the policy in place. The Pregnant Married Students Policy, staff is proposing deletion of this policy. There's no CASB model. It's essentially addressed in other policies that we have. So, that's where we are with that one. And the Weapons in School Policy is really just some technical changes to make it align more closely with state law and the CASB model policy. So, that is what we presented today.
Okay, board members' questions. Kitty?
Yeah, I have a question and maybe comment about the sexual harassment policy. And it's kind of the intersection of that and child abuse reporting. Because there are behaviors that children can engage in and even with, towards a staff member that would fall under this definition of sexual harassment, but which could also be a significant indication that the child is a victim of sexual abuse. And so, I'm just wondering what we do in a situation like that? If there's a child, like, I can give an example and this is, I mean, this actually happened. I can't remember if it happened in our district or elsewhere, but a seven-year-old child rubbing up sexually against teachers and students and other kids. So, that would fall under this category. But I'm hoping we're not going to give this kid some kind of punishment for sexual harassment when what really needed to happen and what did happen in the cases, it was reported as.
Right, I would expect that that would be reported to Social Services.
Right. But is there, and we may not even need anything in here that just addresses that even though technically it would fall under this definition, you're not going to give any consequences to an abused child?
Right, I think that, I mean, this policy is really around reporting and investigation. And I see at the end of page two, when we're looking at whether that constitutes sexual harassment, you look at the totality of circumstances, the nature of the conduct and the context in which the conduct occurred.
Well, and the other thing it brings up for me is it's...
And we could say may be subject to discipline instead of shall be subject to discipline.
Is, I don't know what kind of education staff gets on sexual abuse and how to recognize it. You know, what are some of the signs? But I do know from my experience of, you know, 15 years of teaching classes on this is that most people don't recognize such signs. And especially if you're getting into an adolescent. And I just, I don't know if we need, if, I mean, I don't know if this needs to be addressed in the policy as much as we need to say, take an opportunity to make sure everybody is properly educated about it.
I can't speak to what the formal training is.
Right.
I know in working with principals over the years, they're certainly aware of that sexualized behavior in the school that often there's things in the background that have led to that. So, I don't know if anybody else can speak to that.
Yeah, and it just brought this up for me, reading this and reading the child abuse reporting and thinking, okay, there's some things here that are more subtle than just fall into these, you know, strict definitions. That's all.
Donna, do you want to jump in here?
I just want to jump in. I just want to, I would like to see one thing changed on that policy. I read through it and I agree with everything. Right at the very end, big corporations, and I think that BVSD would fall into this category. I'd like to see more specific than periodic training and have it say yearly training. Because periodic is too wide open for that wording. You know, someone could get training and then three years later, maybe they get training again and things have changed or new people come in and they're not trained annually.
I agree with Donna on that.
And Donna, it says all students, so would you think K through 12?
I'm looking at the last paragraph. Page three, Notice and Training.
Right.
All Students and District Employees Shall Receive Periodic Training. I'd like that to say yearly, biannually, you know, something more than periodic.
Okay, and it might be that we separate students and employees. I don't, I mean, maybe what that's a question I have is how, what does the student training look like for sexual harassment in elementary, middle, and high school? Sort of trying to hearken back whether my kids receive that. I have no idea.
Yeah, I'll have to get with staff to kind of let you know what currently we do for students and staff. And then, this is on study, so we can, let us bring that back to you all and then we can maybe consider that as a change.
And we had a gal that I met with for coffee after she graduated in May. And she was really advocating for yearly training for students as well.
Kathy?
Tina, you might know her, Melissa, to answer this question, but we have a bullying policy that I think covers cyberbullying, but sexual harassment could also take place over the internet, I think. And so, does this cover that kind of behavior? If there's behavior occurring over the internet, perhaps offsite or even onsite? I mean, do you think this policy is broad enough to cover that?
I mean, our discipline policy is really where the consequence piece comes in. And then...
But is the language broad enough to cover that kind of behavior as being something that is prohibited?
I mean, it could, it could. I mean, with the off-campus conduct, especially the electronic off-campus, then we have to look at the First Amendment piece and that connects us to the school.
Right, but I think we get to that a little bit by the balancing against impeding the ability to participate in an educational program and all of that. So, I just wanted to make sure that this language is broad enough. I'll look at it again and maybe I'll just send you something that looks like it's broader. But I think it doesn't, it's broad, but maybe not broad enough to cover that kind of harassment occurring over the internet? Or maybe some cross-reference to?
It does broadly say conduct or communications. And I wonder if that's the place to say including electronic or something like that.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Because that is a broad word, communications, but...
And then, I think if you just say like that, including electronic, is that what you said, Tina? Then that might pick up even the on-campus or off-campus because then we aren't specifying. So, that might be broad enough then. Because I think a lot of that kind of inappropriate behavior now occurs over the internet.
Any other comments? Shelley?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I support any looking into what kind of training we're doing for kids and PD for teachers because I think the last statistic I read on sexual harassment among students was like 80% of students. It may have been girls, but I think it was students have experienced or witnessed some sort of sexual harassment in school. So, I think that that's prevalent enough that we need to be sure of, that we're giving kids the knowledge they need to know what to do when that happens. I also really like your suggestion, Melissa, about changing that word to may because I think that that's probably more appropriate given what Kitty has said. And I think Kitty made a lot of good points on that topic, so thanks.
Okay, other thoughts around this policy? So, we have a lot of questions on this one around training, type of training, frequency of training, whether it includes electronic communications. If that's right, and then the shall to may, to create some, a little flexibility there. Anything else?
I too, just want to know more about how the training takes place. I worked in an environment before where it was online training so that you could update it. The first training had to be in-person in a group and then each year you pass it. So, that would be informative to all of us to know how the training takes place.
Kitty?
Just wondering if anybody knows, is there, excuse me, not state of the art isn't the word, but best practices around educating around sexual harassment? And, I mean, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that, but it would be good if we could find out what the answer to that is. Everybody, including us, we should get training.
Okay. Rob, did you feel that you took notes on this or do you want us to also email questions to you?
Always happy to receive emails for clarity. I've been taking notes, trying to kind of keep up. And I know Laura's and... I've been taking notes, trying to kind of keep up, and I know Laura's and Melissa's are taking notes, and so we'll circle back and do the best that we can to answer all the questions, but if you have some specific things that you'd want us to look into, please send that our way, that'd be helpful.
Okay, so if anything further crosses your mind, just email Rob. Well, it's hard to capture it all just in one, you know, you hear a good idea from another board member and then it prompts something else, so. All right, is that it? Any other-
Is this one that you would like to see back for study?
I think so.
Along with this additional information?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one was a little bit of a group, so anything you've got, you can just go ahead.
So, I just had a couple of questions on the JFABD, the R. Who's our current liaison on the homeless students?
Emma Lyman.
Okay. And the other one is the last paragraph on page two, if a student is located outside of the district, but a determination has been made that the student shall remain in the school of origin, the district, it's the word shall, because we're holding another district. I've been in a situation before where there's not an agreement. We're saying that they, we shall agree. If they can't agree, do we have a procedure that's followed?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
For transportation? When a student comes to us, that very last paragraph, page two of two on homeless. It's just the word shall, the district where the student is located shall agree on a method to apportion cost and responsibility for the student's transportation, or share the cost and responsibility equally. So, if we don't agree?
I would have to double-check with Emma, but-
There's just a question.
This is based on the statutory language, and I think in practice, there might be some agreements on, we kind of deal with our people and they deal with their people, do you know what I mean? I don't think there's money exchanged. I'm not sure if Sam can speak to that or not.
Typically, there's not money exchanged. Typically, Emma calls her countercard at the other district and they figure out who is going to pay for that and cover it by what means they're going to do it. So, is a bus going to be arranged, or are they going to provide reimbursement for gas or any of those?
Every, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I do have another one. On the students in foster care, at least one district member, is that Emma as well? She'll be designated to serve on the students in foster care? Okay. And then, on that same, same one, and transfer of education records, there's a five-day schools that receiving the transfer. That doesn't always happen, and so I guess we just, can you explain on the five-day transfer? Is that a pretty set? What happens if we can't get it done in five days?
Are you talking about enrollment?
If a student in foster care transfers to another school, and I'm assuming that means from our district, the sending district, and is that all in reference to BVSD?
Well, like, I guess it could be either one. That would be what the statute provides, so.
Okay. Because we don't, we don't always get the five-day thing. Sometimes it happens in weeks and weeks.
I mean, this law is fairly new. I mean, so I think there's a lot more awareness around what the provisions are and the urgency.
Okay, and then my final question, don't roll your eyes on this one. What if a student has no, nor will not be immunized? Because there's a statement in there, and that, so that was my question on, shall notify the student's legal guardians that unless the district or school receives the student's certificate of immunization or written authorization, within 14 days, the student in foster care shall be suspended? There are some students that come that don't have the immunization and they're not going to get it. Is there a process we follow for that foster care? Is that a pretty hard set rule that they'll be suspended if they don't have that?
That's in alignment with our current policy and the law. The practice is that there, there could be an exemption request that comes with that.
So should that be included, Melissa? Unless the person files an exemption?
What's that?
Should that be included in that policy, that suspended unless the person files a request for exemption, or states a request for an exemption?
Yeah, we could certainly add that in there.
That, to me, would make sense to add that. Just because if we, if we just leave it as is, then if we don't get that, there's a good reason to suspend them, and I would hate to see that happen.
All right.
Okay, anything else? Richard?
I just want to go back to the equal education opportunity policy a little bit. And I guess my question is basically, why don't we call it equitable educational opportunity instead of just equal educational opportunity? Since, since we are a district that provides, or tries to provide equitable educational opportunities for all students. Is this just in compliance with the federal laws that we have? Is that keeping it with the same language?
Yeah, I mean, the citation to the Equal Educational Opportunities Act of 1974, I mean, the language really is tracking that federal civil rights legislation.
And do we have to do that? I mean, do we, can we change it?
I think you can call the policy what you want, the title of it. I mean, we want to be in compliance with federal law, so I could double-check, but-
Because we know that equal does not equal, that equal is not equitable in many instances, so.
Kitty?
Or maybe to address Richard's issue, maybe putting some statement to what you just said in the first paragraph, and still keep the law, the language that tracks with the law, but then recognize Richard's point of equal is not necessarily equitable and that we're committed to equitable. Would that work for you, Richard?
Well, yeah, but I think we need to call it like it is. I mean, that's what we're doing. We're trying to provide equitable educational opportunities, let's just say it.
I'm just trying to work through the sense of equitable versus equal in this context.
I mean, in the civil rights context, in terms of, I mean, equal is the language that's used. When you're talking about providing services, like, I mean, it's possible to put in some kind of statement in there around the district's interest.
Is it, Rob, can we hear from our equity experts in terms of this particular?
I think we're trying to listen to what it is that you all are saying, but also ensuring that the policy aligns with federal law, but doesn't misrepresent who we are, right? Like, I hear that's what we're, that conversation, but why don't, why don't we kind of take this back and kind of bring another draft forward and see, and see if we can kind of figure that out?
I keep pulling my other ones up. The one on the JICI weapons in school, just where we said but not limited to, I know it covers this, and you put all the things in there, slingshot, pludge, nunchucks, brass knuckles, they added nunchucks. I'd add chemical to that as well. Just a thought. And then I couldn't help but think when I read the one under, the students may seek prior authorization from the building principal to carry, bring, or use, possess a firearm facsimile. I couldn't help but think of the incident at Fairview High School with the color guard. Just a thought, anyway. But chemical might be added to that.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, there's probably a lot of things we could add.
Yeah, but since they added pludge, and it just made me think, that's one that is very easily to just sling on somebody.
Right.
I mean, this is one of those policies that really is tracking the state law, and I will need to go back and look at the definition of dangerous weapon.
I just didn't realize who added nunchucks.
And so then it made me think, okay, chemical.
And that was in the CASB model, so I'm assuming that's in the state law, but I can go ahead and check.
So I have a question, if we added chemicals, so does that mean that people who carry pepper spray or mace for safety, like a lot of women do, would that be considered a weapon banned?
If they used it to hurt, if their intent was there to hurt, I don't think you ought to be bringing it into school, personally.
It does say just possessing.
Yeah, it doesn't say what the intent is.
Right.
Exactly. I don't know, my thought is it shouldn't be in the school.
Well, we'll wait to hear from Melissa on-
Right, I mean, I would want to talk with certainly Sam Essie, I think about science classes and kind of how that would play out, because the listing are just the fact of having these items in your possession puts it in the category of dangerous weapon. So we'd have to be more specific, I think, than just chemical.
Okay, but in a chemistry class, people don't walk in with their own chemicals. I don't believe. Right. Exactly. But if you have it on your body and use it to throw at someone, is my thought, it just made me think of it when I saw nunchucks, I thought, no, I think substance might cover it, though, too, so.
I guess the point I would, I would make is that this, this policy would cover the instances that Donna's speaking. The question is whether you outline it specifically, and if you do, that doesn't make other things confusing. Instead, to your point, Donna, we don't ask, you know, kids aren't bringing their own chemicals to chemistry, right? Typically, we provide those, but, but we can check and make sure that there's, there's nothing that would confuse that.
Not limited to brings it, that said, well, we didn't cover chemical, but it should be there if, I don't care that we put chemical in, but not limited to, takes care of it.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this batch of policies? Okay. Then we've provided some feedback, and we can go on to our study item unless anyone needs a break. Okay. So we'll do the first study item, 11.1, the 2018-19 revised budget. Ready?
We're ready to go. It's just not showing yet.
Well, we all have it, and it's posted on Board Doc, so-
All right, here we go.
Maybe we're set.
All right, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on the 2018-19 General Operating Fund and Other Funds Budget for the revised budget. So, a quick review of the, or the slides that'll be in here. So we'll go into detail on the General Operating Fund, the beginning balance, revenue expenditures, transfers and reserves, and the summary of changes, and then some, a couple of notable items on other funds, and then next steps. So, first, for the beginning balance. So, we update this for how we end the fiscal year on June 30th. This would tie out with what's included in the audit that we just reviewed last month. So, as a reminder, when we develop the budget in the spring, we project to spend out operating budgets. So, we know that there's the opportunity to spend those dollars and the possibility that expenditures may not happen by June 30th. So we don't estimate that there will be leftover dollars that there can be decisions made around. We expect to spend those out. So, we go through this carryover process, which is part of that ending fund balance at last fiscal year and becomes beginning fund balance with the revised budget. So, two items in here, the unspent budgets for the carryover, and then the remaining difference from what we had in the adopted budget is just the net difference in revenues and expenditures from last year. On the revenue side, minor revenue changes due to a little bit, very little bit, to the shortfall of students that we had identified in the adopted budget. So it was 134 funded enrollment short from budget, 70 funded FTE. So, because we slipped into actual declining enrollment, ever so slightly, we're able to average over those fiscal years, last year and into this year, so the impact wasn't quite as much. We also had an increase in free lunch students, which translates into at-risk funding, so that's why there's a very minimal change in the Total School Finance Act funding. Most of the revenue shortfall is due to the shift between equalized and non-equalized specific ownership tax. So that is, the car registrations, essentially, we keep a portion of it, but then another portion of it is assigned to the School Finance Act. So, again, when that shift occurs between what's equalized and what's not equalized, it does impact our bottom line. Then we've also recognized some ongoing revenue for activity funds, so this has a equal and offsetting expenditure side. This just allows us to, to adjust budgets rather than transfer dollars in between those activity funds. It's sort of an accounting need. On the expenditure side, I'm going to cover the one-time changes first. So, the standard carryover items, as we call them, those are textbooks, the school resource allocation, Medicaid, and the REED Act. Then special carryover requests, these are items that are budgeted in the prior fiscal year and were unspent, as I mentioned. We planned to spend them out, we projected to spend them out, and then if they don't get spent, they turn into this carryover process. Gives us the opportunity to evaluate that going into the next fiscal year if it is unspent, rather than just having it being an automatic carryover. Some of the larger items in here, the ERP selection process, we'd budgeted last year, that really didn't kick off until the new fiscal year. The initiatives inventory and the work with the district management group, learning materials and professional development, and then the, some of the equipment for the CTE program that was budgeted in the revised budget last year. Those equipment didn't get received until this current fiscal year. Then we have some additional one-time funding requests that were included, these staffing, some one-time staffing, subpay and stipends. We're doing a little experimentation with this custodial subcrew to try to alleviate some of the custodial staffing issues. The teacher subpay, so adjusting some of that subpay to address our shortage. And then, also the reconciliation for that loss of that student FTE, moving staff from one, from ongoing to one-time staffing. On the ongoing side of expenditures, so in our preliminary mid-year adjustment, or mid-year analysis, looking at the compensation, overall compensation for staff, there was a little additional budget in there that is needed, so we've- additional budget in there that is needed, so we've adjusted that down. We have the staffing for the October count, so this is where it transfers from an ongoing expenditure to a one-time expenditure. And then this other category, some of these are those student activity fund dollars that I referenced in the revenue side. So a reduction in ongoing expenditures, but an increase overall, particularly with the one-time. Transfers and reserves, so on the transfer side, largest portion of this certainly is the one-time transfer to capital reserve for projects, a couple of the larger notable ones in here, so $600,000 for elevator upgrades at 11 schools, they're just aging and parts aren't available, $200,000 for resurfacing Boulder High and Fairview tracks, and then a little over $200,000 for operations equipment to help support the operations program. On the reserve side, so what we have included in here is an increase in the contingency reserve from 3% to 4%. So this does not change board policy. Board policy references the ability to review that annually, so it doesn't up the minimum of 3%. We're just setting aside, included an increase to 4%. And then we also have the weather reserve, as we're calling it, it's $500,000, we discussed this with the Audit Committee. So it's setting aside dollars to deal with those annual fluctuations in weather that can hit the bottom line, that can include anything from a very cold winter that would increase the use of natural gas, to a very, maybe not so cold, but snowy winter that would increase the need for plowing and overtime, into a very dry summer that would increase the need for watering some of our grass and fields. So it really just sort of allows us to adjust to those impacts of the weather on an annual basis, and we can add to this over time in any one year that we may see an underspending of our utilities budget. So as we're getting tighter on utilities, this just allows us to be able to sort of take the tops off any expenditure spikes that might happen. So a little summary, overall, the budget is balanced with our ongoing and one-time expenditures dialed in. We've increased the budgeted ending balance by $500,000, and we're in a, what I would consider a healthy place going into the 2019 legislative session and the 2019-2020 budget development. So that's the General Operating Fund overall. On the other funds, just a few of the notable changes, certainly all the other funds have reconciliation to ending fund balance, use of the, any dollars that are left in those funds for one-time purposes, those are all identified, will be identified in the required resolution. But these notable items, so we're doing a one-time transfer of $1.4 million from community schools into the Capital Reserve Fund to do some paving in between the Ed Center and Arapahoe Ridge. The Operations and Technology Fund has a $6 million increase in the ending fund balance to reflect the additional revenue from the Mill Levy Adjustment in December. The Building Fund has $2.8 million additional revenue for the sale of the Northmore property in Broomfield and an E-rate reimbursement. And then the Bond Redemption Fund, which is where we pay for our debt, was adjusted to meet the principal debt payments related to that Series 2019, or 2019 Series A and Series B issuance that was in the resolution earlier. So, next steps, we have our final adoption scheduled for January 22nd, and then certainly adjustments can be made up to June 30th if there's additional information that comes along. Any questions?
Okay. Can I ask a quick follow-up on Slide seven? The Capital Reserve Projects for the, that was the track and field?
Yes.
Okay, and the preschool, what was that for?
So we counted some additional students, even though there was a shortfall overall in students, we had an increase in CPP slots available, so we have to transfer those resources over the preschool fund.
Okay, and in this case, you mentioned that even though we had a decline in enrollment, we had an increase of free and reduced lunch students, so we got a funding boost. And I know we've talked about this many times, did that money follow those students more or less, or that just goes into the general fund?
It just balances the overall budget, yes.
Okay. All right, other questions, board members? Kathy?
Just to follow up on Tina, what percentage increase did we see in FRL?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but we can certainly get that.
Okay, other board members? Sam?
The money from selling the Northmore property that goes into the building fund?
Yes, to address, to augment some of the projects in there, in the building fund.
Okay, separate from the bond work?
Very much in conjunction with, but to add it to the, to a scope of a project or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, other board members, questions or comments? Okay. Shall we take, move on to the next item? And Kathy needs a break, so if we're going to take a break for five minutes, and then we'll be right back. Let's come back to our meeting, and continuing with our study items, our next study item is 11.2 Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons Charter Application. So prior to this meeting, if you weren't here, we had a work session in which we received the recommendations from the DAC, the staff, and the superintendent. Rob, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, I think we covered it in our work session, just want to thank those folks that came out, and again, thank our team for doing a lot of work in a short amount of time to be able to bring these reports forward to the board.
Okay, and so I think this is a time for us to have some further discussion around the application, and I don't know exactly how to do this, because I wasn't sure how the work session would go. I'm wondering if this is a time to continue, for board members to continue to ask questions that we could forward to the Ascent team, or further ask staff questions about how they came to their recommendation. Does that be a good place to start?
I would just comment, Tina, that I had hoped to be able to ask questions of Mr. Schuler. I understand why we ran out of time, but that was, I guess, a frustration of mine, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think I was tracking the time.
A desire maybe to have that opportunity, if we have, if we can make it happen between now and the 22nd.
That's a good idea. Well, yeah, it's better to do it separately. Do we want to put that on agenda setting to? It could be a work session.
Session, I guess.
We could try.
I think, given what Mr. Schuler said, that he has a different expectation of what the application looks like than what I thought the application should look like, so I think it's fair to give him an opportunity. He said he had other documentation for us to look at.
He says he's going to send it tomorrow.
Right, so I think we need another time to review what he sends us and have a chance to ask questions again. And I know staff worked really quickly, I just didn't have a chance to get through absolutely everything I wanted to before tonight. Spent a considerable amount of time, so I'm hoping we can have a little more time.
Richard?
We're getting another application?
They're getting a supplement.
Okay, based on the feedback from DAC and staff?
Yes, based on the three recommendations, they're preparing a response, and it is, my understanding is they, you know, they can provide information all the way through to January 22nd.
So they, so the answers to some of the questions may come in on that supplement?
They might, yes.
Yeah, my question would be, if we can't have them back and have this conversation in person with them, and they send the materials, does anybody else look at those materials, or is it just the board that looks at them? Does DAC or staff look at those additional materials to give, no?
Why not staff?
We can, certainly, we can look at additional materials. I think that, you know, it'll be interesting to see what he sends in regards to additional materials. I mean, we were pretty clear, as we've gone through this process, we didn't feel like we had the information that we needed, right? And we shared that, and we said the application was incomplete, we came back, I know staff was working closely with them, so I don't know what additional materials that he would have not been sending that would want to send now. And so I know that he said he would do that, and so we could take a look at that and kind of come up with a game plan from there, but certainly, we can pull our team together and review if necessary.
And I know that when we visited, this is in reference to Kitty's question earlier with, and they didn't get a chance to ask, but that was one of the questions that I asked at the walkthrough about what their curriculum was. And she had a different explanation than what you had presented, so I'd like to see their answer to that.
What did she say?
As far as they didn't teach specifically abstinence, that they taught that the only 100%, to be 100% sure that you would not get pregnant would be to abstain. That was her answer to my question on what they teach.
And that's what the policy says, too, that they have.
So it wasn't, it kind of answered your question, but they didn't get a chance to respond.
And I need an answer to that question, definitely.
But not just that one, there were several that I had on how they would respond to the, to Rob's recommendation and what they would have to agree to. So I would like to see those come through before I submit, you know, just to hold it, we may have questions after they send their answers, okay?
So I just have a procedural question. I'm hoping still to tour, but I think the board shouldn't be basing its decision on anything unless it's something we've all seen in writing, because otherwise, it doesn't feel fair to me. So I think we should tour, but I don't know how, when you get an answer, and I might get a different answer, that that's what we, does that make sense? So we either have to figure out a way to share what we've learned, so that we all have the same information, or we just have to go off of the written documentation and a question and answer session that we all get the same information from.
Yeah, I would like the question and answer in a one-to-one setting, and I didn't tour to get any additional information that anybody else, I think they opened that invitation up to everybody, but it just was a question that came up on the tour, you know, what's your curriculum like in this area? And just because other people had concerns, those were my questions when I toured.
Well, and I asked my own questions when I toured, before you guys came. So, for instance, we talked about retention in high school, and they, because I was wondering why their high school had lower numbers, and I think the Classical Academy in Fort Collins has a much smaller high school than an elementary and middle school, and so there is some kind of retention issue happening at the high school, from middle to high, and so that's something I'll just share that, you know, and we're not saying it's a negative or a positive, but it's, again, it's an example of something that's not in the application, it's not addressed, and, yeah.
So where did you tour, I mean, where did you go?
Golden View.
Golden?
Yes.
So, just as a general statement, I would say that there's not a single issue that comes before this board where we don't have a differentiated amount of knowledge about the topic when we vote. So I'm, I just think that comes with the ballgame. So I certainly didn't go there with an expectation of anything other than learning more, and so I do probably know more than you do, because I spent time there asking questions, but will that influence my vote? I suppose it would, because, and I certainly would share anything that I learned there with anyone here on the board. I mean, that's why we do what we do when we gather more information, so, but I don't think that that's a problem, that anyone goes and gathers more information about any given subject.
I wasn't suggesting it was a problem, I'm just trying to make sure we have a common base of understanding.
And I'm saying that's impossible, because there's no common base of understanding for any topic that comes in front of the board, as far as I can tell. Like Kitty knows a lot more about sexual abuse than anybody on this board, and that influences her decisions about that.
Well, I understand, Shelley, but if they give you a different answer than what they have in their application, that's a problem to me.
Well, I would say that, I would say that is now what they told me.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to get to, is that the information that they give that's contrary to the application, I think the board needs to know. So I'm trying just to come up with a little more standardized, and I think that's what we're doing, is we're going to submit questions, they're going to respond if we have more questions, so that we have kind of a process. I'm not, that's all I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I'd be the first to say if they told me something that wasn't consistent with the application.
That'd be very helpful.
Yeah, and on the topic of retention, we did talk about that with her, and, you know, her main explanation was that when kids reach high school, a lot of them want to play sports, a lot of them want to be able to have more access to languages, you know, it's the same thing happens here in Boulder Valley, when you see kids leaving NED to go to Fairview or Boulder High. So I don't, I don't, there may be more to it than that, but that's certainly one of the things that she talked about.
Well, yeah, my question was just whether they could reach their enrollment numbers, because it seems like a similar high school can't, and so that's just a concern. Again, it's not a yes, or, you know, it's not a binary kind of thinking, it's more just, okay, is that budget going to work, how's it going to play out?
Yeah, and I'm actually very supportive of staff's recommendation, so it's not that I'm, you know, for pushing this through in any way, I just feel like, you know, well, do people want to know how the visits went? I mean, is that something we want to talk about tonight? Because I'd be happy to share, so.
Yeah, and, well, let's go back, let's do a step back. If we want to try to schedule a meeting with Ascent, should we do that during agenda setting, or should we just do it right now? Okay, do we want to agree that we want to try to meet with Ascent after we get the document tomorrow to kind of?
Well, just looking at our calendar, and it looks like the next two Tuesdays, we have five o'clock meetings, so.
Well, and maybe we can find time after or before, they seem fairly flexible. Laura, is there any opening you see that we could see if we could find a mutual time?
Our draft board schedule on the 15th shows we have an executive session from 5:00 to 5:30 on Ascent, 5:30 to 6:00 Supie Val, then 6:00 to 9:00 is a work session, we've got the 1920 budget development priorities, 1920 draft strategic, let me scroll down here, draft strategic financial plan work session, and then school start times. On the 22nd, we begin the work session at 5:00 with Policy JS Technology Philosophy and begin our board meeting at 6:30.
And are we voting on the 22nd?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have to do it before the 22nd.
Okay. We could look at an alternative date.
Well, um...
If you want to vary from the Tuesdays.
Could anyone meet at 4:00 on the 15th? Richard, did you say no?
No.
All right. 4:30.
The first half hour is about Ascent on the 15th, is that what you said?
The 15th is an executive session on the Ascent application, yes.
What?
If we need it.
Can we use that time instead to do this, or we need to keep that?
You could change it. What, would you want to change the superintendence evaluation date? Because you were talking about the process on that, right?
Yeah, could we move that? Would you, everyone feel comfortable waiting a little bit on the evaluation, taking it into February? Sorry, Rob.
We've got, we do have Tuesday, January 29th, which is a...
No, we're voting on the 22nd, on Ascent.
No, if you wanted to move a work session to the 29th, we could potentially use that date for something else.
Okay.
And same thing with Tuesday, February 5th.
I'm out of town on the 29th.
Okay.
If I'm hanging it up, I can move my schedule and be here at 4:00.
You can be here at 4:00? Can anyone else be here at 4:00?
I can.
Wait, what's the question?
Four on the 8th, 15th, sorry, today's the 8th.
I can try.
Okay, I can do that.
Jan 15th at 4:00?
Yes.
Meeting with Ascent.
Yes.
I will invite them for a one-hour meeting.
Okay, and we can move stuff around to be accommodating in some extent.
Okay, so a question. On the one-hour meeting, what were we planning to give? On the one-hour meeting, what were we planning to give tonight? Was it thirty minutes?
Probably, yeah.
So we could go for thirty. I mean, I just want them to have the time that we had allotted that now they didn't get tonight.
Well, how about forty-five minutes? Why don't we, do you want to do four-fifteen? Does that help with people getting here, Shelley, or?
Yeah, any, yeah.
Anything helps. Four-fifteen actually helps me a little bit, if we could do four-fifteen to five. Kitty?
So I just want to clarify, our timeline on this was the state board that we have to vote by this?
We got instructions from the state board, and then we came up with the schedule.
Okay, because it just seems, I mean, as everybody else has commented, awfully rushed.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to schedule a meeting for January fifteenth, beginning at four-fifteen, for forty-five minutes. And I'm going to invite Derek Schuler and his team from Ascent, as well as our board members, and Tom Weston, correct?
With Tom, Tom?
Yeah. If he's available, yeah.
Okay. Do we need Dak there for any reason?
You can maybe let leadership know, or maybe?
Okay. Okay.
And so the process will be tomorrow, we get supplemental documentation.
In the meantime, we're sending questions to Rob, and he's going to aggregate our questions, especially if we're asking duplicate questions, and he'll send those to Derek, right?
And then we hope to have the answers before we meet on the fifteenth?
We'll get them when, we'll let Derek know we're meeting on the fifteenth, and they can come up with their own timeline for responses.
I just think it would be helpful to tell him, if he can get it to us ahead of time, so we can read them, so we can have a conversation on the fifteenth, that would be helpful.
Okay. Rob, does that sound okay?
Right, so to clarify, and I think we probably need to put some, you know, questions by a certain date from board, so I, so we know what to send to him. Because what I don't want to do is send him some questions, and then send him more questions, and so on and so forth, right? And so allegedly, he's sending us something tomorrow, right? At least, that's what he said. So tomorrow is Wednesday. If we could get all the questions by Friday, is that, is that too quick, or?
It's probably not quick enough. I mean, what I would suggest is that we send you the questions regardless of what we read in the document, because, and then they can decide how to respond. If it's already been covered, they're good to go. Because otherwise, if we wait to read the document, add a couple of days, and then they, I mean, I think we're meeting next week in seven days. So I don't think we have enough turnaround for that, so.
So by close of business Thursday, or close of business tomorrow?
I was thinking for tomorrow.
Because I don't know when he's going to send it. I mean, he says, we, we're eight in the morning, or?
Yeah, I would just say to send them, we should try to get our questions to you by tomorrow, I think.
Well, I have two burning questions, but I'm going out of town. And they're not really burning, because it was on anti-discrimination. And Kim had emailed me after our visit, and I said I was concerned about that policy. And she said they adopted one the next evening, but they were going to include it in an upcoming handbook, which they hadn't had time to do over the holidays. So it's like, where's that handbook? It may come in in these materials. And then, you know, what they think about, and can they comply with your recommendations. But I can send those two questions out and, tonight? If that's what works for everybody. But I think a lot of our questions, that's why I asked the question to Tina earlier tonight, was we were throwing questions out, and I saw them taking notes. And I'm hoping that the documentations that they send will address those questions.
Yeah, I think that's the hope. And if you have something that you want to make sure, that you want it written, that you ask this question, I think you should send it to Rob by tomorrow. And if it's repeated, it's okay.
I still need a little bit more time that I won't have tonight and in the morning to review everything, so.
Well, you can send his later.
Can we just say we'll send it as soon as we can?
Just send it as soon as you can. And if it, you know, they may not get to it if it's really late, that's my only, you know. But I think they will. They seem to be very quick, so.
But the questions are going to be sent to Rob, right?
Yes. Does that make sense to go through you?
It does make sense to go through me. I do, I do think that it makes sense to get all of our questions in one place and give them an opportunity to answer, and I think that's fair, all of the questions at one time. And then beyond that, if you read and you have additional questions, they're going to be in front of us. You can ask those questions at that point in time. So does close of business Thursday give you enough time, Kathy, to kind of review and then put together your questions? Or would you want, if you had additional questions beyond that, he'll be with us for an hour, so.
Well, and I think it's fair to him, if I have additional questions, to send them to you. So he has time to think about answers. He may not send us something in writing, but at least if I think of, you know, he sends us new materials tomorrow. And so I think we aim for close of business, but if other things come up, I just think it's fair to him that we send them to you and we let him know what we're thinking. So he has time to think about it.
That's fine by me.
All right, so everyone feel okay with how this sort of murky process is going to move forward?
And then are you going to share all our questions back to us, so we know, so we don't repeat?
My, my hope would be to put together a document, and Laura, hopefully you can help me with this, put together a document that has all of the questions, and then send that out. And any supplemental questions beyond that, after I send that out, that when I, when I send it to him, I would just copy all board members.
Okay, so there was one thought about sharing from people who took the tour. Is everyone interested in hearing from the people who took? Shelley, do you want to start?
Yeah, let's see. Any notes here? So I think, just, I think when you go in there, it's just striking the difference between that school and BDSM schools. And it's because kids are sitting in rows, the teacher's up front, they're in loose uniforms. They're, it's just very much more structured. There's not like maker spaces, you know. Part, part of that is just the building they're in, I think. But part is just their philosophy, that that innovation is not really the thing that they do, you know. They, I mean, the walls are covered with classical paintings, the library's full of classical books. It's, it's really very, very different from what you would see in BDSM. Having said that, I, you know, I think we visited maybe five classrooms, five or six classrooms. And the students were really impressive, the teachers were impressive, the kids were engaged. I think someone who spoke tonight mentioned how they come up to you, and they explain what class they're in, what they're studying, the importance of it, and welcome you. So they're teaching the kids these sort of social skills and how to interact with adults that I think are pretty impressive and very useful. There's a noticeable lack of computers in the school. You won't see any Chromebooks there. The first time I saw a computer, I think, was in seventh or eighth grade physics class. I think that if we have some parents that decide that they would want to go to a school like that, that will be one of the reasons, is the judicious use of technology in the school. I asked a lot of questions about their curriculum, their discrimination policies, their treatment of transgendered children, their approach to special ed. And also, just what I thought would be the impression of board members and maybe other educators who walk in there, that you're just struck with, because of the uniformity of it all, with how do kids express their individuality in that, in that setting? You know, how do, how do they express their creativity? And so I told Rob this, I had an opportunity to talk with the Latin teacher. And I asked him that question, and he, he, I thought gave a really thoughtful answer. And he said that, you know, what we do here is teach kids how to think, because until they can think, they can't really be truly creative. And putting a kid in a maker space doesn't necessarily teach them how to think about ways, or how to think about new ideas and how to come at questions in new ways. And that really, the core of creativity is, is, is critical thinking. And so I thought that was an interesting response to the question. You know, maybe you could do that and also have a maker space, I don't know. But I, I thought it was a legitimate answer. So I would say, you know, I certainly didn't, wasn't offended by anything I saw or concerned about any of their answers. I thought their answers were appropriate to my questions. And I was a little surprised not to see their anti-discrimination policy included in the application, because I know they had worked on that, we talked about that. So maybe they, like you said, they just didn't get it done in time, I'm not sure. Which makes me wonder why it didn't exist already, you know? But I don't think there's anything scary about this school. I think it's just very different from what we're used to in Boulder Valley. And I feel like if, if tonight's any example, or the letters that we're getting are any example, there's probably a fair number of people in this district who are interested in that model, so. Those are my impressions.
That's helpful. Thanks, Shelley.
I can just talk, speak to what Shelley said, basically the same observations. I think the thing that struck me most was walking in and seeing everybody in uniform. And I thought at first, girls can't wear pants? But then I saw some. And, and I asked the specific question, what is the uniform and what do you require? And what if students can't afford the uniform? And they made sure to let me know that the student, that, you know, they help people with that cost. The other thing that struck me is the physics class did, the kiddos did go and get their computers. But those were school-supplied, that they brought into the class. So it wasn't like distributed, like our one-to-web. What struck me from a teacher's point of view is I couldn't believe in the third-grade classroom to see everybody, you know, twenty-five kids lined up in rows and sitting at desks. I mean, we go through our schools and see the innovative spaces. And I asked, how's that working for them? But, I mean, there seemed to be a lot of engagement in the class. And I asked how they kept from, you know, students, they're in rows and lines, and how they interacted. And it's, you turn to your partner, and they showed examples of that. The anti-discrimination, I did, we did, I asked about it, and so did Shelley. And they said that that evening, they were going to talk about a policy, and later I heard that they adopted it. But I think they thought the anti-bullying and another one that I read in this packet that I have marked. But I think that they thought that they had covered it in harassment and bullying, but we wanted more specifics, so. I hope his documents come through, but that's my general observation. I was quite impressed at how clean everything was, and the building was impressive. Other than that, I mean, what do you say? You only are in a class for five minutes in each class. And we had, after an hour and a half, I think, I finally said, I have to go. But it, so I didn't get a chance to see music, which was down in the lower level. So anyway, that's kind of an overview.
So I went in the morning of the same day, and I toured with a prospective family as well, which was interesting. And a lot of the comments that Shelley just made, I would echo. It was very structured, and there's a lot of uniformity about the instruction, the way that it looked and the way it sounded. I heard less dialogue than I expected, because there were some comments that it was a conversation, that a lot of conversations took place. So at the high school level, I saw more lecturing, which I think you would see in a more traditional school. But again, as Donna said, you know, I was in a classroom for five minutes, so I don't know what happened in the next five minutes. And I was, I didn't like the play spaces very much, and I know it's because they're in an office park. So it, I didn't understand how the kids got out and played and saw greenery and stuff like that. It was very lacking of those things. And that's, of course, a facility issue, it's not a desire or anything like that. So it was, and it was, it was very, very quiet, there was not a lot of chatter from the kids. And, and I think they seemed engaged in most of the classes. So it was, it was a fine tour. I'm trying to think if I have anything else to say. I don't think so. Kitty?
Yeah, I just have a, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but I, you know, I wrote down some comments as I was reading through this application. And one of the things I, it's the second thing I wrote down, so it had to have been close to the beginning. But I didn't have the hard copy, so I didn't, you know, I can't look at where I got it. But it sounded to me like they did not think teaching critical thinking was important. But you mentioned it, that they talked about critical thinking, and several of the parents did too. So I'm going to have to go back and find this, and why, I'm just wondering, why did I pick that up when that's, you know, when, that's not what we've heard? So there's a discrepancy there somewhere.
I forgot to mention one thing, too. The, what's really unique about their library is that they don't have books, per se. They have reference books. But they give the kids, I think you saw in the application, a set of books for the whole year, and they keep those. But there aren't, it's not like you would go in and find lots of different children's fiction books, or, you know, the Lemony Stickett series and whatever. They actually don't have those books in their library. So it's a different thing, sort of a different idea about how the books work. And Kim spoke about that to me, so.
And Kitty, tonight, they did mention, and they mentioned it on the tour, a lot of emphasis on Socratic method, so.
Okay, so, so given what we just said, would our best next steps be to give our questions to Rob, get the document back from Derek, and then hopefully we'll be meeting next Tuesday? Or are there other items that you all feel that we should discuss now?
The only other thing that Kathy had brought up is that, you know, we could add, if we wanted to, conditions. And, I mean, I don't know if you had anything in particular in mind. What, it's not going to surprise anybody that what I have in mind is our human sexuality policy to add to that.
We did ask about that, and they said they teach the state requirements at the state levels. You know, you do it in fifth grade and seventh grade, or whatever. And they teach that curriculum, is what they said, so.
So what do you all want to do? Do you want to have further discussion this evening, or do you want to wait to get more information and then?
I want to make a visit.
Yeah, I do too.
Yes, and so you can just email Derek or Kim? Because we got an email from them inviting us.
Because it was today, right?
No, that was Meadowlark. You can go anytime. They were very. It was very easy to schedule.
So, so, did you go in the morning?
I went in the morning. You were the 1:00 PM, I think.
Car pulled, and I specifically told Kim when I, I think I was one of the first to respond, saying, sure, I'd like to do the tour. But I said, we can't do it in a group of three, so.
And what grade levels did you visit?
She took us through elementary and up to the high school.
Yeah, I think I went to five classrooms, two elementary, a middle, and a high school or something. Oh, and I went to the music room.
Ours were long, I mean, we were there quite a while.
All right, what else? Shall we put a pause on this discussion?
I think to Kitty's question, I think it's fair. If we think of additional conditions that we might want to add, it probably should be included along with our questions. Like, I suppose it could be in the form of a question, but could we include this as a condition? So that, I just think as much transparency as we can put to our thinking and advance notice, it'll give us a better process.
And just one point I want to make. I don't want this to be any different from the other charter schools that we. There was something in one of these documents about the transportation, you know, that just doesn't support all groups of people. And I get it, but that happens with all of our charter schools.
Not with Justice. So Justice does some amazing things to get their kids to schools.
That's true, but Justice has also moved their facility. So we have to open that up too, as far as, one comment tonight was they didn't want to see them establish their academic, or their school in one facility, and then move to another.
Okay, so, anything else for this evening? Yeah, well, we'll see if it happens. We're only, we've only got fifty percent of the group there. Hopefully, they can make it. All right, so our. All right, um, so our next item is agenda setting, of which we already accomplished quite a bit. Give yourself a pat on the back. Any agenda-setting items? Maybe we shouldn't add anything new until, like, February. Does everyone feel okay with that? Yeah. Poor Rob's like, really, no, let's skip agenda-setting. Okay, um, if everyone's good, maybe we should wrap up for the evening. Oh, wait, I have something to ask. Bill just gave us a budget presentation, and we need to put that on consent or on action. Thoughts about that? People gonna have lots of questions about that, or can we throw it on consent? Yes. Consent, consent, okay, great.
Because what Bill said is we can still change it if we have need to, so.
It's plenty of time, okay. All right, well, with that, um, if it's okay, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.